All right, we are back from closed session. Mr. Hirons, will you read us out of closed session?
Well, as the Stafford County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and where as section 2.23712 of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended, requires certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the Stafford County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and only such public business matters were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Madam Clerk, can you pull the board, please?
Mr. Connolly?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Mr. Decatur?
Agreed.
Ms. Egan?
Agreed.
Ms. Hazard?
Agreed.
Ms. Healy?
Agree.
Mr. Hirons?
Agreed.
Mr. McCosker?
Agreed.
Bachelor, motion passed, do you know?
Thank you. I believe we have several motions coming out of closed session. Ms. Healy, would you like to start?
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the superintendent's recommendation for the vice principal at Mountain View High School.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Dr. Benson, will you make our announcement, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to announce that Ms. Chelsea Tryon is the new assistant principal at Mountain View High School.
Stand up, please.
Most recently, she was a 10-month assistant principal at AG Wright Middle School. Ms. Tryon has extensive experience with secondary students, having served in both middle and high school levels for 13 years as an administrator, special education department chair, principal intern, and special education teacher. As the special education designee at AG Wright, she created a master schedule monitor and evaluated all paraprofessionals and created trusting relationships with families. Ms. Tryon holds a bachelor's degree from Christopher Newport University and a master's degree in education from the University of Mary Washington. She is also a graduate of Brookpoint High School. Congratulations.
Congratulations. I don't know how Dr. Stempel's going to wrestle that from Mr. Boatwright, but I will let them sort that out. So, welcome aboard and to your new position. All right, do we have a second motion? I think Ms. Decatur.
Yes. Madam Chair, I move that we approve superintendent's recommendation for assistant principal at North Stafford High School.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Benson?
Madam Chair, thank you. It is also my pleasure to announce that Ms. Carly Hegna is the new assistant principal at North Stafford High School.
Stand up, please.
Most recently, she was associate teacher at Brookpoint High School. She has 12 years of classroom experience. She also served as an instructional leader at Brookpoint High School as department chair, colleague and mentor, program coordinator, school improvement planning committee member, and class sponsor for the Student Council Association. She also served as the school's chairperson for the school accreditation committee from 2011 to 2013, and participated in school-wide assessments based upon the Southern Accreditation of Colleges and Schools, five standards of quality and assurance. She holds a bachelor's degree from Radford University and a master's degree in administration and supervision from the University of Mary Washington. Congratulations.
Welcome aboard. All right, and we have a third motion. Ms. Egan.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve the superintendent's recommendation for supervisor of planning and GIS.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Dr. Benson?
Madam Chair, once again, my pleasure to announce Mr. Matthew Townsend is our new supervisor of planning and geographic information systems.
Are you here, Matthew? Okay, just making sure.
He comes to us from Prince William County Public Schools, where he was a data analyst in their planning office. His duties included the utilization of the ARC GIS system to display graphical data graphically and conducting spatial analysis to ensure accurate student enrollment projections. He also refined and maintained multiple databases containing tabular and spatial data for student enrollment, housing development, school facility, and portable classroom information. We hope not to have to do the last. The data is used to aid the capital improvement program, planning, student enrollment, projecting, school attendance adjustments. We're excited to have him join our team.
I would just like to make a quick comment in this regard. As noted in the June 28 Freelance Star article, Stafford is expected to lead the region in growth over the next two decades. UVA's Weldon Cooper Center projects nearly 209,000 residents will live in Stafford by 2040, and it would make Stafford the 12th largest locality in Virginia. Stafford County Public Schools previously had this position, but when the person left, it was not filled because it was not sort of a time of growth. At this time, I'd like to thank Mr. Haran and Ms. Juash for essentially doing the job in addition to their other duties of managing the needs of 32 facilities, new construction, and transportation. I'd also like to thank the board for supporting this position based on these population projects. I believe Mr. Townsend may be here for a long time. So, I would like to thank the board for that. And Mr. Haran, again, thank you. I know it was in addition to the many other duties, and I'm sure you'll be happy to have somebody else working in that area. So, moving along, I would ask that everyone would rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Joining the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we will move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second? Is there any amendments or changes?
Madam Chair, yes. I'd like to remove item number 10.03 from consent and add it back to the agenda as item 11.03.
For action, correct.
For action, that's correct.
Is that okay with the motion makers?
Yes.
Yes? All right, all those agree to the amended agenda, moving one item from consent to action. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, let's see, sorry. Next, we will have, I believe Ms. Boatwright will be coming to us for our staff report this evening regarding the report on teacher turnover. It's nice to see you here in your new official role.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Benson, this evening I would like to share with you licensed staff turnover information and our total reward strategy. The turnover is based on FY 2016 and FY 2017. Resignations and retirements have slightly increased from that which was previously reported because we refined the data to capture those occurring within a school year. I am pleased to report that the turnover rate for licensed staff decreased nearly three percentage points between FY 2016 and FY 2017. Certainly, we are pleased with such a significant decrease and hope that it will continue to go down. What you are seeing are the reasons for leaving that licensed staff reported to us. Please note that the slide doesn't cite all of the reasons reported, rather, these are highlights. When employees exit the system, they complete a voluntary request for termination form. There are standard reasons included on the form, and employees mark the appropriate box. An other blank is also included for the employee to write in a reason not on the standard list. Employees are able to mark as many reasons as they want. All of the reasons cited by employees are included in this data. On the preceding slide, you saw that there were 52 retirements in FY 16. This slide shows, however, that only 51 employees actually reported that as the reason. Again, the data here is as reported by the employee. We often hear that the majority of our licensed staff are leaving to go to northern school divisions. That data, however, does not support the notion. The top reason cited is relocation out of the area. The next most pervasive reasons are retirement and family health reasons. Those three categories of reasons accounted for 53.6 of licensed staff turnover in FY 2016 and 49.1% in FY 2017. Significantly, the percentage of licensed staff going to northern school divisions decreased from FY 16 to FY 17. As you can see, economic reasons are not a primary factor either. The number went down as well from 6% in FY 2016 to 4.6% in FY 2017. It is significant that a very small percentage leave because they are dissatisfied. The data here is for resignations only. It doesn't include retirements and leaves of absence. The vast majority of licensed staff resigning have zero to five years of experience. Percentage-wise, we lost more licensed staff with zero to five years of experience in FY 2017 than in FY 2016. Specifically, those numbers are 47.74% in FY 2016 and 51.35% in FY 2017. As you can see, however, the actual raw number of licensed staff leaving with zero to five years of experience decreased from 106 in FY 2016 to 95 in FY 2017. This is due to having a larger number of licensed staff in FY 2017 than in 2016. The next highest is within the six to 10-year range. I'll talk more about this later in the presentation, but the data supports the board's continuing efforts to invest in the market-driven approach to teacher salaries. Again, we are very pleased to see our license turnover rates decrease at a noteworthy pace. What may be influencing this is our focus on total rewards. Total rewards is a strategy to attract, engage, motivate, and retain employees. It has six components: compensation, benefits, recognition, work-life balance, performance management, and professional learning. We've made great strides in each domain. We are on a good path with our compensation strategy. Prior to FY 2016, we used a traditional step teacher salary scale that proved to be unsustainable over time. In FY 2016, the board replaced it with a sustainable, market-based model that specifically targets those teachers whose experience levels are below the market median. The year before the model was implemented, teachers with zero to 15 years were below the market median. After implementation in FY 2016, teachers with zero to 12 years were below the market median. In FY 2017, teachers with zero to nine years of experience were below the market median. Those are impressive gains. For the current fiscal year, we have lost a bit of traction, and now teachers with zero to 11 years of experience are below the market median. As previously noted, the majority of our licensed staff who are leaving have zero to 15 years of experience. This status supports continuing investment in the market-based approach to teacher salaries. On the service side, the board supported implementation of a pay banding model that incorporates compensation incentives linked to attainment of job-related educational credentials as well as performance. Like the market-based teacher scale, the pay band is sustainable in that it doesn't incorporate set annual intervals to obtain an increase in salary. Currently, technology and skilled maintenance employees as well as school nurses are on the pay band. Effective this year, paraprofessionals, bus drivers, and bus monitors are on a partial pay band. Over time, it is hoped that these categories of employees will be on a fully funded pay band, and their salaries will reach at least the market minimum. We are especially thankful to the board for establishing a merit pool of funds to reward eligible employees for superior job performance. In this way, employees are motivated to perform well. As you will recall, motivation is a key total rewards indicator. For FY 2017, the board approved an improved comprehensive health insurance plan that incorporated enhanced dental and vision benefits. Under this plan, our employees are paying lower premiums in nearly all health insurance benefit categories than in FY 2016. The high deductible plan options even offer a portable pre-tax health savings account with $500 in seed money for participants. For the current fiscal year, we are thankful there is no increase in insurance premiums for our employees. As a matter of fact, the high deductible premium went down. Recognition is an area of strength for us. We honor our Teachers of the Year as well as our Service Excellence winners with an annual banquet. The most meaningful recognition, however, probably occurs more organically, as represented by the notes and emails of gratitude from students and families that staff receive throughout the year. We are quite aware, too, of our schools and work sites that have their own traditions to honor employees throughout the year. At our banding monthly staff meetings, for instance, Dr. Benson gives a thumbs up trophy award to a deserving employee for a job well done. The small things really do matter. Work-life balance is also really important to us. We offer myriad opportunities in this realm. The Employee Assistance Program is comprehensive, providing short-term counseling options, employee coaching, a comprehensive website, webinar selections, newsletters, video counseling, and in-person presentations. In addition, the Communications Office has established community business partnerships that offer our employees discounts and rewards. A positive work environment promotes work-life balance. Over the past three years, we have enjoyed continuous improvement in our climate survey results. Significant gains have been made in the areas of trust, leadership, and enjoyment in working for Stafford schools. 84% of our employees strongly agree that they enjoy working in Stafford County Public Schools. Now that we are on a good path with climate survey data, it's time to take a look at customer satisfaction. So, this fall, HR will take the lead in developing a customer satisfaction survey for our operational departments. It is important to know if we are adequately servicing our customers and stakeholders, and to find out those things that we can do better. Continuous improvement as an organization is important to us. We hope to push out that survey starting in spring 2018. As a division, it is important that employees have meaningful feedback on job performance. Just as important is employee voice. Skilled maintenance and technology employees participated in the design of their performance evaluation tool. A similar method will be used to develop performance evaluation instruments for parents and bus drivers and monitors. The last domain of total rewards is professional learning. In FY 2016, tuition reimbursement was instituted. These dollars are important for those employees, both licensed and serviced, desiring to further their education and skill set. Priorities given to those seeking endorsement in a critical shortage teaching area. The Teaching and Learning Summit held a couple of weeks ago was very successful. It is now our signature collaborative professional learning initiative. Kudos to the lot staff for such an amazing professional learning event. The learning walks associated with our C5W initiative also are a professional learning opportunity for our teachers. Over 900 learning walks had taken place as of April 1st of the school year. More are to come in the upcoming school year. In April of this year, Dr. Stephen Staples, State Superintendent of Public Instruction, presented data to the UVA Curry School of Education on the teacher shortage. As you can see from this slide, the number of students entering teacher prep programs decreased by almost 65% from 2008/9 to 2013/14. We've seen these shortages firsthand on our recruitment trips with university career counseling officers confirming this decrease in teacher education candidates. This slide certainly doesn't present good news. You can see the numbers of K-12 students increasing in Virginia while the numbers of students in teacher prep programs are decreasing. The national trend is the same. What this says for us is that retention is our best recruitment strategy. Total rewards is a proven strategy to recruit, motivate, engage, and retain employees as supported in the research by World at Work, the leading industry total awards association. It is our hope to continue to increase our total rewards offerings and to give our employees a voice through various means, such as surveys and shared decision-making. More importantly, HR plans to work with our Communications Office to help us to tell our story better. We're doing some meaningful things in Stafford. We need to package that as a strategy to recruit, engage, motivate, and retain employees.
Questions? Questions? Ms. Egan?
Thank you. So, there's been a lot of discussion about cost to compete and our inability to keep up with Prince William and some of the other northern counties that are getting state money. So, I guess my question to you is, I'd like your professional opinion. I'm on the legislative committee with Mrs. Hazard and Mr. Connolly, and we're going to be meeting soon to talk about what our legislative agenda's going to be. We've had this conversation before about, you know, we need to be pulled into that pool of those that benefit from those funds of the cost to compete. So, your professional opinion, do you think we should be advocating to be included in that, or should we be advocating to disband it completely from the state? And just, we're looking for a little bit of guidance here as far as, you know, trends are... Does that open us up to be losing teachers to Maryland? So, if you... You don't have to answer that right now, but I would like to know that as we go forward with our meeting and what our legislative agenda's going to be. I'm just curious as to, you know, do we try to expand it to include Stafford County in that cost to compete? Do we eradicate it? And does eradication open up another can of worms with losing teachers going to other states who have already implemented something similar to it? So...
Or taking away money from those localities that actually get it and those teachers.
Right. Well, we're trying to level the playing field, and what direction we go in to do that is my question.
Yeah.
We don't have to answer it right now.
That is a good question.
Thanks.
Mr. Hirons?
At least, this is only if it's easy to do. Can you give us some more data on the... Our data breakdown? Essentially, I am looking for the zero to 10 years broken down by the reasons for leaving. Does that make sense? Does it make sense?
I do know what you're asking. We can do it. It'll be a little time-consuming, but I mean, but we can do it.
If it's time-consuming during the time that I know your office is very busy right now?
It is.
Probably don't need it right now, but something maybe just put on the parking lot for when you get to it?
Yes.
I was hoping it was just some kind of a pivot table that would be easier to do, but maybe not.
No, because the employees, when they leave, they actually fill out the form online, but it doesn't dump into an Excel spreadsheet. And we don't ask for the numbers of years of experience on that particular form, but when we put it into our database, we book them up and we put it there. So, it's something we can get to you. Fall would be a great time to do it.
Yeah, I don't think it is necessary, and it might be more out of interest because the numbers aren't that high on a lot of the reasons. But if that group is, you know, leaving at 80% because of economic reasons or going into a northern division, that'd be concerning. Of course, you know, there was only 19 that reported going to northern.
Right. Well, this slide doesn't have all the reasons. I picked out highlights.
Okay.
So, we do have other reasons, like promotional opportunity. Some people had a family transfer, which is different than relocation, because we're trying to capture those military transfers. So, we have numerous reasons on that form, but this doesn't highlight all of them.
Okay. So, I think if we could get it with all of them, that would be great, too.
Oh, sure, sure. That's easy enough.
Because those numbers, zero to 10, you know, we're always the ones that are claimed, yeah, we train young teachers, then they hit the streets and, you know, make a lot more money or go elsewhere or go back to Pennsylvania. That's what we hear most often. If there's any way we can retain those for their career.
Right. I will tell you, it is hard to compete with going back to family.
Yeah, it's for some people.
I'm from the eastern shore of Virginia, so it was pretty easy. Not many job opportunities.
I stayed here a long time.
But, you know, outside of that, you know, this is good information. We're trending in the right direction.
We are.
We still certainly have work to do to ensure we continue to recognize our experienced teachers and keep them, that 11 to 15 group is a little worrisome. I hope that doesn't just move to the 16 to 20 group next year and we just lose more experience.
Right. But we'll actually have this trend data so we can bring it back next year and do a comparison again.
Yeah, and it's great to see. I mean, I don't know if we've done this level of analysis ever before, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. McCosker, were you next?
I'm Mr. Boatwright.
Were you waving?
Yeah, no, it's good information. Yeah, I would... I think Mr. Hirons has a point there. I would like to see, when you guys get a chance, the comparison. So, if we're losing 204 folks on the zero to five, how does that compare to our other divisions, to our north and south, maybe across Virginia? I mean, you know... Also, how many years is it before the certification is given to the teacher? Is it two years?
For teachers on a provisional license, they have up to three years.
So, at the three-year point, they're quote-unquote certified?
After... If they done all that they're supposed to do, taking the coursework or taking their testing, they will get a full Virginia license.
Right. And then, so I would be interested to see, like, after the third year, what are they doing? So, are they leaving? Is it the three-year, hey, I'm going back to Pennsylvania, see ya? I'm going back to Ohio, going back to family?
So, basic... So, maybe, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, but maybe once they've gotten their provisional, are they staying with us or are they leaving?
Yeah. Yeah, once they get certified.
I can tell you that if that's something that this board wants to see, we can start tracking the data like that. We haven't... We don't currently track it that way, not down to that level of specificity.
Because you won't know if it's four-year, or five-years, or six-year until they get their license because they have to meet certain criteria.
Right.
Okay. All right. Whatever it is, it's just the issue of, you know, if we're training new teachers to leave, then that's a problem. So, let you guys suck the egg on that and figure that out, but that would be a bad thing if we're training new teachers to leave. So, yep, thanks.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Mr. Connolly?
This is really good. I appreciate you all putting this together. We don't need to discuss it now, but I was interested to see if you did have data that broke down by schools, and if there is an anomaly, is there a noticeably larger number coming from one or two schools or from a certain part of the area of the county? Do we have more folks leaving in the north than we do the south? Do we have an odd number of people leaving this one school? I mean, did you all break it down that far that might give more of an indication of why folks are leaving?
We can do it that way. I mean, I will tell you that sometimes we do see trends sometimes with people leaving, but this year, we saw certain trends with people leaving, but they were all relocating out of the area.
Okay.
So, it wasn't that they seemed to be unhappy, they were moving. The family was leaving.
Across pretty much all spectrums? Time in, where they are?
This was a variety of teachers at different years of experience.
I would think since the economy's getting better, I would think people are now getting the ability to head back to... Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
And my other question, too, since this is the first time I've been through this part of the thing, is the zero to five years, is this typically always higher because people are kind of finding their way? New teachers may come in and say, you know what, this isn't my thing. I mean, do we always see this bar graph as higher regardless?
This is not atypical across the country.
Okay.
To see zero to five years leaving.
How about here?
I haven't studied this before prior to FY 16.
Okay.
Because we didn't break it down this way.
Okay.
We broke it down for this report.
Okay, that's really interesting. Okay, thank you.
But certainly, we will continue to break down things like this so we can have comparisons from year to year to year.
Ms. Healy, I think you were next.
When this comes back, or when you put some more together, I'd like to see if there's any way to identify how many people in these categories checked more than one box, because to me, that may be significant.
Is that a capability?
Yeah, that's what she said. They could check as many boxes as they want.
Right, because sometimes people have multiple reasons for leaving.
Yeah, and I think that's a good thing, but it's something that I would want to take into consideration in looking, you know, at the big picture. And then, I'm assuming, if, you know, I'd also like to know if any of the people, the retirement people, if they checked any other boxes, because that would be, you know, interesting as well.
Well, I know that at least one did, because that person didn't report that he or she retired.
Oh.
That's why the number is different.
Right, because there's 39 checked retirement, but there's 52.
So, the person retired, but they actually checked a different box, but we gave them retirement papers.
Well, anyway, it's just something I'd like to... If we're really going to, you know, deep dive into the data, that's something I'd want to... I'd be interested in. And I know that, you know, over the years, it's just a common cry throughout the nation. the nation, not just Virginia, not just Stafford, about people leaving education. Those, those first few years, it's just, they decide it's just not worth it.
Yeah, I think that that.
Unfortunately.
That's the one that says a lot.
Yeah.
If not, I just have one quick. Lisa, and I think you and Dr. Benson have talked about this. I believe the state is requiring some kind of different exit survey, is that?
Yes, they are, but we didn't start using that until it was pushed out in February. So, we don't even have six months really worth of data yet. That's something that we'll compare next year, because we'll have at least a year's worth of data.
Sure. But I mean, that's something, it looks like the state is trying to, well, maybe get a handle on for themselves, but there is now something that we are, that all school divisions will be using. Is it, you're understanding?
Well, it was voluntary.
It was voluntary.
So, we have, we have chosen to use it. It was a model exit survey. And we've chosen to use it because it really gives good data. It breaks down by what do you teach? Are you in elementary school, middle school, or high school? What subjects do you teach? How many years have you been teaching? And it pushes down into an Excel spreadsheet. So, it'll be easy, easier next year with that. So, we'll still use our voluntary request for, for termination form, because you typically have fewer people to fill out an exit survey, but in order to leave, they have to fill our form out. So, we get that data because we hold them hostage. But, but the exit info, I mean, it is harder to get people to fill out an exit survey. So, but we'll report the raw numbers.
Ms. Healy, you and myself, and you know that they won't let you leave the CLE training until you fill out the exit form, and so we know how that works.
Exactly.
That's how you get the credit. But I think that's interesting about the state. It will be interesting if they will be publishing in some kind of format those that voluntarily collect this information. So, I'm just, I know, to put on your list, but if they do, do that and they report it, I think that would be another meaningful part of this discussion. A little bit, Mr. McCosker, I think it was going to what you were saying of, well, what's happening elsewhere? And if the state's going to compile it, let's use their, use their stuff. Is there thought, certainly not in the immediate, next month or two, I know you're busy hiring people, and that's what we really want you to be doing, but sometime in the fall for some kind of work session that we could deep, dive deeper into that? Is that, is that okay? I want, I would personally like HR to keep hiring and getting people on board for the next couple of months. So, we'll work with Dr. Benson to come up with some kind of date that we can do that.
Certainly.
All right. Well, thank you very much for presenting the data and all the information that you all have put together. That was great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, we will move on to citizen comments. At this time, I will, I do have a sheet with two people already signed up. I will call them forward first after I go over the requirements for public comment. You, if you did not sign up, you may still, of course, speak and I will invite you at the end to come up. So, let me go over the ground rules. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. The speaker shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. You will see we use the stoplight system. When you see the yellow light come on, you have one minute remaining. When the red light comes on, that means you are done. We give you about five seconds to wrap up. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment, which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the chair. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against the division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Policy 1113, Public Complaints. For those who've not spoken before, there is not a dialogue with the board. It is a time for comment. You may, of course, check a box for a response, but there will not be a give and take with board members during your comments. So, I have two speakers, Melissa Bradley and Eric Taylor. If you all will come forward, you can pick who wants to go first and who wants to go second. And then if anybody else also wishes to speak, if you wish to go ahead and rise from your seat and get to the corner so you can quickly move forward. If you have not already signed in, please use the sheet to your, your right after you speak and sign in for us. So, all right, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Eric Taylor, two Ashbrook Road in Garrisonville District. The topic of my comments tonight is staffing, in particular, focus teachers. For more than a decade, six of the county's 17 elementary schools have borne the full weight of the district's shortage of full-time focus teachers. Those six schools, Falmouth, Kate Waller Barrett, Parkridge, Rock Hill, Wide Water, and Stafford Elementary Schools, have had to work with about .5 FTE at each school, while the rest of the county's elementary schools benefit from a full 1.0 FTE for focus teachers. I briefly reviewed the F-18 budget and noted that 11 and a half FTE were added above and beyond the adopted FY-17 budget, which in turn increased the classroom staffing by 24 FTE over FY-16. While those actions are certainly welcome and a welcome move to blunt the dramatic loss of experienced teachers, it didn't appear that, that provided any relief to satisfy the deficit in focus teachers in the elementary schools that we mentioned. My request tonight is simple and straightforward. Fund and hire additional three focus teachers to provide every elementary school with a full-time focus teacher in time for the start of the school year this fall, or rotate the current full-time focus staff in time for the start of the school year to provide each of the previously mentioned six schools with 1.0 FTE for focus teachers. After living with understaffed focus teachers for nearly 15 years, all should be in agreement that it is well timed to either correct the deficiency or at the very least firmly demonstrate the district's commitment to ensuring all schools are afforded equitable access to the county's scarce resources. Thank you.
Thank you. If you're Mr. Taylor, you're already signed in, so I've got you. Great.
Hello. My name is Melissa Bradley, Vonville Road. I'm in the Griffiths-Wide Water District. I have been a Stafford County resident for 27 years. I attend the Stafford County Public Schools for my K through 12 public education, and now I am the proud parent of two daughters in the Stafford County Public School System, one of which is transgender. I support my child and her well-being. My discussion points for today revolve around the subject of suicide and available resources in the public school system. Schools are trying their best to prevent suicides by educating teachers and staff and encouraging students to come forward if their peer has threatened or made a comment of suicide and whatnot. But one of the things that has been left out is the open support for LBGT kids, not just transgender kids, the whole community. As it is known by you guys, the non-discrimination policy is included for race, sex, age, color, religion, national origin, political affiliation, or disability, but it does not include gender identity or sexual orientation. Support for LBGT kids is crucial in prevention of suicide or suicidal attempts. Allowing teachers and staff to be an open or public ally will increase the number of LBGT kids who do come forward for help. These kids need to feel safe at school. That's one problem that we do know is, is on the rise, is that LBGT students don't feel comfortable in the school. You know, we're not asking for a big show or, you know, rainbows covering the walls, but just teachers to be allowed to be an open ally, to wear a pin or, you know, a little sticker in their classroom or something. Allowing the teachers to be a safe and open ally will increase the number of them coming forward as well as decrease possible suicide attempts. I won't give you lists and lists of statistics or numbers, but pertaining to trans kids, according to the 2015 transgender survey, 54% of K through 12 who were out were verbally harassed, 24% were physically attacked, and 13 were sexually assaulted for being transgender among their school. So, there, trans youth are at a high risk of suicide when unsupported, but some kids aren't as lucky to have support at home. They need a safe place for all kids, not just kids who are straight or cisgender. Public schools offer computer use for those who don't have one at home, or they offer hot meals for those who might not eat. Just being allowed to offer LBGT support openly for these kids at school is something they might not get at home, and it could drastically decrease suicide rates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board this evening? If so, please come forward. If anyone else is thinking of it, please feel free to move forward. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the school board, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair. Appreciate the opportunity to speak before you guys this evening. My name is Reverend Joshua Cole, and I live at 1138 James Madison Circle in the Falmouth District. And I just want to step up today just to mention perhaps a research or consideration on a committee on diversity and inclusivity within our schools. Although schools, our schools here in Stafford County have been integrated for 50-plus years, we still feel the scares of segregation, whether that be with race, religious beliefs, and sexuality. They still divide our classrooms and we must mend that wound. Although we no longer operate in an official apartheid, our students still divide themselves unofficially. I'm a product of the Stafford County Public School System, and I remember riding the bus, the black kids would still sit in the back of the bus. The Muslim students would walk in, fear walking down the hallways, and the Muslim, excuse me, the Hispanic students would still separate themselves in the lunchroom. And so, while we believe we've made strides in being a place of acceptance, the sad reality is some of our students may not feel that while they're at school. I think the hate that our children and that the students in Stafford County hear over the airwaves from different leadership, from different politicians are starting to take place and play on their psyche. And I believe that we should, as community leaders or whatever have you, fight for inclusivity and community amongst our students and make sure that they feel that. My faith has reminded me to focus on people and their struggle. We must not hate others for their differences, but love them for their uniqueness. And I remember when I was in kindergarten, we were taught right at Falmouth Elementary School that the world is nothing more but a crayon box, and we appreciate every single color. I ask that we push for that here in Stafford County, that we be a beacon of light, that we can all embrace and accept each other. We're not saying to forget about your traditions and what you believe, but just that we can walk together in tolerance and lift each other up. So, I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. God bless you all.
Thank you. Don't forget to sign in. Anyone else, please come forward.
My name is Cheryl Pettyjohn. I live in the Acquia District of Stafford, and I wanted to address very quickly something about teacher retention. I know that there's been some raises that Stafford has done for the teachers that don't have a lot of experience. I know that I've heard some comments from people who live in the county about the experienced teachers not having that raise. I'm not about money. I've taught for 20 years. I've maxed out where I'm teaching at, which is not in Stafford. What I wanted to address was, this year, I looked at leaving teaching after 20 years. I even looked in Stafford, but I teach a remediation class right now, and I, I didn't want to give that up. I teach math. The reason I was looking at a non-teaching job or changing my county was a feeling of unimportance by my administration. Being looked on as what I do, what I say, my thoughts don't have an impact for my, my words are failing me, but the school environment. I do not teach in a hostile environment. I have a great school. I have great kids, but when you've brought a concern to administration and it's ignored, and that, when that happens and the other teachers say that it happens to them too. So, what I'm asking for you guys is if you could not do a survey, but, because we do a lot of surveys, but to have a, a dialogue with your teachers here in Stafford about the environment that they're teaching in and their feeling of being valued. And that's what I wanted to bring to you guys, is, is maybe not, not look at money, although that's nice, but to also look at how the teachers feel about their impact on their students and how administration, how they feel the administration sees their impact. And I'm hoping that came across. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to address the board? Okay, seeing nobody, again, leaping over the chairs, I will go ahead and close public comment this evening. Thank you for all those who came out to speak. Next, we will go to our board member committee reports. I do not know if there are, have been any committee reports since we met last. I'm seeing shaking heads.
The only thing I want to report is we do have a finance and budget committee meeting on Thursday. We are starting at 5:30, if that got noticed.
Yes.
For their, their start time. One of the things we are working on there are budget goals, so I do encourage folks to come out and listen to the discussion there for our FY-19 budget development.
Madam Chair? Yes, Mr. Q.
Just while we're on that topic, now might be a good time to mention that I'll be taking Chris's place on.
We'll get there.
Okay.
We'll get there.
Sounds good.
All right. Let's make sure I'm being transparent. Transpire, watch out. Okay, no more committee reports. We will go on to board member comments. Ms. Healy, you want to start us?
Well, Madam Chairman, just very quickly, we had a comment tonight about the focus teachers, and I have to say that I cannot remember a report from the Gifted and Talented Committee over the past decade plus that did not have that recommendation, that we have a full-time focus teacher in every one of our schools. So, it's something I think we should, you know, put into, you know, the mix when we're looking at the priorities for the budget. And, and the, the one suggestion that, that was made, I, I found very interesting about, well, if we can't increase it, why don't we share the pain? And, you know, split it up, because it's not just the smaller schools that are, you know, are short. So, it's something that I would like us to, you know, to put on, you know, the table for discussion, because, you know, we've, we've made absolutely zero progress for a long time, and, and I think it's time to have a plan. We may not be able to do it all at once, but at least if we can, you know, do it incrementally, and I'm sure Dr. Benson can come up with a good plan, because you get about those ones that take a while, but you, you know, you, you make that slow but sure progress. My, my other comment is really just a, a request, and that's for Dr. Benson. I, I know and thank you very much and Mr. Iran about the work being done at Rock Hill, and we're not going to have that fire alarm going off, you know, all day, every day, once it gets fixed. But I was told by a teacher that they can't get, the teachers can't get back in the classroom till like three days before, you know, school starts. And, and we've got a lot of veteran teachers, just like we do, you know, in all our schools, that really take a lot of pride and time to get their classroom together, and a couple of days just isn't going to do it. So, if there's any way we can arrange to get those teachers or allow them to come in the classroom, this is on their free unpaid time, but they, they really would appreciate being able to get in that classroom to set it up, and it would eliminate a lot of stress and I think be one of those positive reinforcements we can give to our employees that don't cost anything. So, if, if that's something, and I know you told me you can't, but I think you can. Oh, good. All right, so whatever you can do, you know, they, they'd love to get in there earlier to be able to set up and, and be ready for that, you know, back-to-school night when all those little new students come, come in to meet the teachers and see that classroom. So, thank you.
Ms. Egan?
Believe it or not, I don't have anything for anybody tonight.
All right. Mr. Connolly?
Although I enjoy being with you all here tonight, I do want to say happy anniversary to my wife.
Oh.
Because it is our wedding anniversary today on a, on a Tuesday, school board night and everything else, but anyways, happy anniversary.
Thanks for.
Dedication, right?
Mr. Cader?
I have no comments this evening. Happy anniversary. Hope everyone's having a great summer.
It's, it's your anniversary too, so, right? Having. It's good that she's watching, right?
She's watching, she's watching, and.
Yeah, I'm sure she's not.
It's like my wife, she's just waiting for me to come home.
She's at the pool, let's be honest.
With big doe eyes. And then you get hit with something when you come in the door. But anyway, let's talk.
I'll vouch for you.
Yes, yes. All right, very good. Hey, good job to staff who are clipping along here at a hundred miles an hour during the break. So senior staff, keep up the good work. You're doing, you're putting out a lot of products, and you're putting, and you're being very professional about it, and I appreciate it. I usually don't sit up here and go on about all the things I've attended in schools and festivals and flowery, you know, cheerleader stuff, because I've got four kids, I'm in the schools all the time, all right? But I am going to talk about this. So I did attend the Stafford County Veterans Memorial Dedication. And what a wonderful dedication ceremony it was. You know, as obviously, it was such a team effort led by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors and the Memorial Working Group, Lieutenant General Christmas and the Chick Chesters, and it was just a wonderful event. You know, Gary Snellings from the Hartwood District was kind of the Board of Supervisors lead. And, you know, and it was, and this all started with, and it was Susan Stimson was on the board and who approved this working group to get started years ago. So it finally came to fruition on Saturday. The guest speaker was the Commandant of the Marine Corps. That's a pretty big deal. It's a four-star general, an active duty, Robert Neller. And it says Lieutenant General Robert Neller, but I saw four stars, so he must have got promoted since the last, the last time I looked him up on Google. But he gave an emotional speech about the importance and the significance of the memorial wall. There wasn't a lot of dry eyes in the audience, including mine. And it's a very significant event, you know, this memorial wall sitting right behind the Board of Supervisors. It's a beautiful, beautiful job that the folks did with that. You know, and as an Army retiree of 24 years, some, most people don't know that I am a retiree, and I know there's retirees in the office, in the audience here, Mr. Haran, and a combat veteran, you know, I was very proud to call myself a citizen of Stafford County and the state of Virginia on Saturday. It was just a wonderful event. So I, Madam Chair, thanks for letting me spout on, but what a, what a great event. And I hope you all, if you hadn't had a chance to go see the memorial wall, go by and see it. It's really beautiful.
Mr. Haran?
At our last meeting, it was the day after the first day, I think, of the learning, dang it, I screwed up the name already, didn't I?
Teaching and Learning Summit.
Yes, Teaching and Learning Summit. I was sitting here, I can't remember the name of the office, Learning and Organizational Development Office. Yes. Yes, you guys did an outstanding job. I was able to attend the final day or the final sessions, and, you know, I was really excited after the first day. Everybody was really pumped. Sometimes those things can go on, and by the last day, everybody's like, whatever, you know, this is blah. But that final day, I think there were people we could have kept there for another week. They were so excited to be there, and they felt like they took so much out of it. I've continued to get, run into folks, run into teachers who attended at the grocery store in my neighborhood, who tell me it was a great event, well put together. Like, I sent an email out to the cabinet congratulating them on a great job and thanking them for their work, because it really was so professional for a group. Yeah, it's a part of your job, but it's not, the primary thing you do is not putting on these professional development summits. And you guys did an absolute professional job, great job, and I think it is really going to help keep our staff motivated, excited. And, you know, there are folks that are still saying, yeah, I can't wait for the summer to be over, get back in that classroom or get back to that school and share what I learned just at that summit. So thank you, guys, for that work. You guys really did an outstanding job, and I look forward to it continuing. You know, it's something we're going to have to continue to focus on in our budget, but I think it's dollars well spent. So thank you, guys. Outside of that, I do hope everyone's enjoying the summer and getting a little break and recharging the batteries.
All right, final comments from me. Mr. Haran, I know that your folks are very busy, getting lots of stuff done in schools, so preparing for our students. I know this is such a busy time in our schools, I've seen. And if you drive on Mountain View Road, don't get stuck on there. So I'll just say that. Took me half the day to get across it, so. But anyway, a lot of good work on the physical part of our schools while the human capital hopefully gets to do some recharging over the summer. I just wanted to mention two things to the board, both, one is more on a personal level. I'm always continually amazed of the investment that teachers make in their students and that they, their student doesn't leave their heart after they graduate as a senior. I had some teachers like that. But I had the distinct and amazing opportunity to go and attend a performance on Saturday night of a Stafford County grad who is hopefully going to be on Broadway. He just got his Equity Card. And what was so neat is there was a, a group of Stafford County teachers who taught this young man when he attended Brookpoint, and they were all there with the big cheering section we had for James. And it was just so touching to see that, you know, the relationship between teacher and student does not end. And it was just neat to see that investment by several of our teachers who were there, who were just as loud as I was screaming and yelling. And if anybody sits next to me at a game, you know, I'm a little more refined in a theater, believe me, I do know that. But it was just amazing to see that, and so I would love to thank those teachers who were there. Robin Hayes, we had a good time, and the other teachers who were there as well. So I just, that just really touched my heart, that the learning experience doesn't end when there's graduation. So I guess I should have ended on the positive note, because that was my positive note. I will share with the board, I met with our VSBA Legislative Positions Meeting in Charlottesville a week ago. That is where I came across this Teacher Shortages document that I know Ms. Boatwright referenced. It will be part of our retreat. I have it on as an agenda item. I know Ms. Egan had asked for that. This whole report is rather frightening on some levels, but it also talks about minority hiring, a lot of different topics. It's very in-depth. So if the board would like, we can send that out ahead of time, so you can read through it. It's very readable, and then we will be discussing it broadly at the, at the retreat. I do think that some of the comments about minority hiring and such are very timely, and I would like the board to know that I have added on my initiative about looking at some committees to further address potentially some hiring diversity and other issues as a possible committee for this board to consider. I will have this document sent out. Ms. Egan, would you send that out to the board ahead of the retreat, just so people can see it? It is something we should all be looking at, because the numbers that are in here are, we have to do things differently, and we have to do them better than our friends around us. With regard to cost to compete, this is just one board member's comments. What really struck me when I was at this meeting, I was the only one there who receives the 20, receives any cost to compete, which for those who don't know, we only get 25%. Nine counties to our north get 100%, which for us equates to, Mr. Fulmer, if I mess this up, I probably will, 2.8 million or so is probably what we get in funds, give or take. That's in the ballpark. But I will tell you that when I looked at the survey from before, that means that 110 million in FY13 was allocated from the state budget to cost to compete. I was sitting there with counties who can't even find teachers to teach anything in any of their schools. Please know, I'm not trying to cut off my nose to spite my face, but I have to say, my heart really went out to some counties who are coming in with proposals of saying, how do we alternatively teacher license? Because I don't even have a teacher in some of my schools. I don't have a first-grade teacher. I have to say from, I haven't done my research, but I am very concerned that we, that the state, the Commonwealth, excuse me, spends over 110, probably now 150 million to fund nine counties that have fairly large populations, that pay pretty well and have a good base. I just, I really struggle with whether that is, that we are setting ourselves up to compete with ourselves in Virginia. We aren't competing with Maryland anymore. We're competing against ourselves here. That's what the cost to compete, to me, is now setting up. Like I said, these are just some of my personal comments, but having heard these other divisions, we have to do something different in Virginia. Maybe teachers aren't coming, because two years ago, we were promised by a governor that we were getting a 2% raise, and then revenues didn't even make it. So we didn't get it. A year later, we were promised a 2% raise, and we are getting it in February. Somehow, the revenues of this Commonwealth need to be focused on by our legislators, because I hate seeing teacher shortages in Virginia. That's what this says, and it's scary stuff. So, anyway, that's my soapbox. Sorry. Moving on, Dr. Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No comments this evening.
All right, we will be moving on to consent, which is now three items. As we know, 10.03, previously 10.03 has now been moved to 11.03. Is there a motion to approve consent?
Madam Chair, motion to approve consent.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our action items. Ms. Decatur, when you were jumping the gun, we will be looking at our board members to serve on our standing committees and advisory committees. Let me just give a quick opening. The reason we do this in July is because most of the work of these committees for the next school year, especially our Budget Committee, starts, well, Thursday, looking at Mr. Haran's as our chair.
Two months ago.
Well, really, you're right, really two months ago. But as we move forward, we do kind of track with that. Come the beginning of the school year, if there's changes, we accommodate then, but we do want to start to set those committees up. So the easiest thing that I'm going to say, since everybody doesn't seem to, is are there any requests to change with regard to standing committees? So I know I'm going to look to Ms. Decatur. I think you would like to serve on the Finance and Budget Committee. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And, Mr. Conley, are you willing to serve on the three-on-three and swap that?
I am.
All right.
Have fun.
Have fun, I like that. Good spirit there.
You want me?
I heard that. I believe for the standing committees, then there were no other switches or requests to change, so I would ask if that is the case. Let me pull up my list to make sure. If I read off the names, this is for standing committees, the Finance and Budget Committee would be Ms. Decatur, Mr. Haran, and Mr. McCosker. Legislative Committee, Mr. Conley, Ms. Egan, and myself. Governance, I thought, Ms. Decatur, it was you and me, but maybe it's Ms. Egan and myself. Either way.
Doesn't matter to me.
Doesn't matter, okay.
It's fine, I can be on it.
All right. And then the three-on-three would be Mr. Conley, Ms. Egan, and Ms. Healy. If everyone is in agreement with that, can we vote that slate? I think that would be the easiest.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or, if not, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Moving back on your sheet to regarding advisory committees, is there anyone who has a burning desire to switch, swap, alternate with regard to advisory committees at this time? All right. Using my usual hearing nobody climbing over the steps or over their chairs, I would move that we would keep the liaisons as listed in the agenda item, I won't read them all, for the next, for the next FY19, no, 18.
Moved to adopt the Advisor Committee Liaison Test.
Second.
It moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that was easy. Thank you. Moving on to our information item.
Not yet.
Oh, no, action items, sorry.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 11.03. Approve the revised.
I forgot, I got, I forgot 11.02, sorry. My mistake.
Yes, you did.
I jumped, I jumped.
I leapfrogged.
I know, I'm sorry. Appoint the delegate and alternate for the VSBA. I am happy to serve as that voting delegate if you would like, but if anybody else is dying to do it, please jump up.
Did you say you volunteered?
I am volunteer.
I second that.
That's me, too.
All right. All right. Mr. Haran, would you be an alternate, just in case? Play some shopping, just kidding. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Now, Ms. Egan, 11.03.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item.
No.
Stop it. Agenda Item 11.03, approve the revised funding strategy in support of the Moncur Elementary rebuild.
I didn't refresh, I don't have it.
I need a second. Just put on 10.03. It didn't, if it didn't refresh, just click on it.
Look at 10.03. Same thing.
Yes.
Thank you.
You made a motion, correct?
I made a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded discussion. I will give Ms. Egan first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the spirit of transparency, I'd like to read off the following information, which I will also add to my district Facebook page, and ask that it also be added to the rebuild Moncur page on our school division website, Mr. Haran. I'd also like to see all the other, the links added or updated on that portion of the website, if you would, so that folks can stay informed on the progress of the rebuild. On July 5, 2017, the Board of Supervisors approved R17-195, but made revisions to the school board's requested use of proffer funds and increased the amount of proffer funds to be used. The revisions and the new funding strategy for the 1 million, $30,000 are as follows. Proffer funds from the Town Center of Acquahia to rebuild Moncur Elementary School was 323. Proffer funds from Embry Mill to rebuild Moncur Elementary School was in the amount of 283. Proffer funds from Westgate to rebuild Moncur Elementary School was in the amount of 251,000. And proffer funds from Shelton Woods to additions at Mountain View High School, which would free up VPSA money to go to the rebuild of Moncur Elementary School. So the total in proffer funds was 980,801. F17 carryover money that we're going to use is going to be about $49,000. So the reason that I'm doing this is because we have been criticized recently at a three-on-three meeting about not being transparent. So I want everybody out there to know where the proffer money's going, where carryover money is going, so that we can't be accused of not being transparent. So again, this was a strategy that we proposed, which was ultimately edited and approved by the Board of Supervisors at their last meeting. I was pleased to hear that cooler heads had prevailed and that the supervisors supported this need, while Ms. Sellers didn't necessarily agree with the rebuild, or as she expressed her last three-on-three meeting, the expending of any proffer dollars from her district, which is the Garrisonville District. She finally did see that the expenditure to Moncur would ultimately help the Garrisonville District because of the area-wide redistricting coming once the Moncur site is opened for business. So on behalf of myself and behalf of the Moncur families who have been waiting so very long for this school to be built, I thank you to the supervisors that did support this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, any other comments? Mr. Conley, any comment? Since you were seconded. Ms. Decatur, any comment?
Yes.
Yep, any comment?
I was just going to say that. I was thinking if anybody, any comments?
Oh, right, yeah.
Do you want to go ahead?
No, you do it. August 1st, you know.
It's okay, go ahead. I don't know the details.
Okay. In this, in that regard, we will be having the groundbreaking for that at 3 o'clock, I believe, on August 1st. Is that correct?
2:30.
2:30, sorry.
If Jamie shows up at 3, she'll be late.
Yeah, thanks.
I also would just like to make a larger comment. We will be looking at an information item later this evening about sharing and a joint CIP and beginning that kind of progress about talking about infrastructure as a county and not just as a county project or a school project. I am encouraged about how we are being able to use proffer dollars for this particular school, but I also believe we need to look at the larger proffer policy. school, but I also believe we need to look at the larger proffer policy on a larger scale. I know the Board of Supervisors has committed to that, but I also think that that's something we need to also examine, how we can use proffer dollars to benefit the entire community. I mean, I would even say that some of the transportation dollars that are sitting in the proffer funds could be used to fund the road improvements around some of our schools, but I know I've lost on that regarding Moncur, so I will not beat that horse. But there are dollars to be spent that we should use, and I'm glad that we are looking at it as a much broader look at how we should use proffers to benefit the entire community. So with that, I will ask, call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and hope to see you on August 1st. Moving on to our information items. To approve the purchase of nine hundred Chromebooks, I believe everybody has seen that particular item. Any comments? I assume not.
One question.
Yes.
So who's the P O C? Is it Mrs. Stewart?
It's.
Hi, Mrs. Stewart. How are you doing?
Does she have her trusty Chromebook?
She has her Chromebook with her.
There you go.
Okay.
Demonstration.
I'm supposed to be, I'm going to be very nice to you, Mrs. Stewart.
Yeah, this is my first time at the podium.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Good evening, Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board.
I got kicked under the table, so I am going to be nice. How are you, Mrs. Stewart?
I'm good, thank you.
Good. So, Mrs. Stewart, I called up Dixon Smith Middle School, and when I saw this, because I think there's seven elementary schools, and I only saw six getting stuff.
Correct.
The only one that wasn't was mine.
Correct.
So that's my question.
Okay, so they received ninety laptops in 2016, so they're not due for a refresh? And so.
Did they get Chromebooks or laptops?
They received laptops in 2016.
So no Chromebooks?
No.
Okay.
But I am not aware of what they do have in terms of Chromebooks currently. I could pull that up.
This is the first year we're buying Chromebooks in bulk.
And so my concern, exactly. So my concern is that, you know, we had the Teachers Summit where we used Chromebooks. Now, I imagine maybe some of the teachers got Chromebooks from Dixon Smith Middle School.
That went to the summit.
That went to the summit. However, so, but if we're going to integrate a new technology, why are we, why are we giving, why are we replacing Chrome, why are we giving the Chromebooks into the system so the teachers can use them, but we're not giving them to one middle school?
So, Mrs. Stewart, if I get this wrong, you can correct me, okay? And it does have to do with replacement cycle, and that we were ahead on the replacement cycle for Ferry Farm. It was laptops at the time because the state didn't have the application that we needed in order to do assessments on Chromebooks. And now that they've come out with an application to allow us to do state assessments on Chromebooks, we can shift and, you know, purchase a larger number for the same, the same dollar amount. So we will continue to infuse Chromebooks into the schools, as well as explore other avenues for getting them into student hands, but we do have this replacement cycle that we have to continue to support.
But I'm lucky to have technology at my fingertips, and I do know that they have an inventory of approximately a hundred Chromebooks purchased out of probably their own funding.
That was the information I didn't have. So, you know, my concern was, yeah, I get it, the replacement cycle, but if everyone's getting Corvettes, I still don't want to run out in a Ugo, right?
Yeah.
So the teachers still need the opportunity to excel and use that good learning experience they had this summer with the Chromebooks. So that was my concern. It wasn't, it wasn't replacement cycle, red, green, blue cycle. That wasn't the issue.
But from a technology perspective also, the Google apps and the Google functionality and everything that are in is platform agnostic. So it can still be run on the MacBooks that they have. They can still do all the operations. They can still do all that. They actually have a better platform than the Chromebook in some folks' opinions.
All right. So why are we going to Chrome? No, all right. We're not going to start that one.
Because we're getting, we're getting three for one.
Okay. Well, I get it, but you got my point. You got my point. You got my, I wasn't mean, was I?
No, no. But I was glad that I had those things at my fingertips and that I could see that they clearly had their own Chromebooks that they purchased out of other.
So got it. So they have a hundred Chromebooks, that's, yeah, all right.
There we go. All right.
Any other questions?
But if, but if there is any degradation in usage between the platform that you're talking about with the MacBook and the Chromebook, of course, I want this infused into Dixon Smith Middle School as quick as we can.
Absolutely.
And I'll find out about that later.
The basic functionality is there across platforms. That's one of the great things about moving to the Google suite of applications. So as an example, I'm on my fourth year with the laptop that I was issued when I arrived, and I will stay on the replacement cycle that's the same as everybody else's.
Okay.
And that platform works, works really well. We're doing my first collaborative project and planning for the welcome back to school sessions coming up.
Okay. So what is, not you. Are you getting this, are we getting lap, are we getting Chromebooks for the board?
We are, you're not.
Hold on. So, so I get it. My replacement cycle is not up yet, you know? The George Washington District replacement cycle is totally out.
I was only speaking about my personal device.
You have the internet now, right? You got the wireless there finally.
We are, we are planning to make Chromebooks available to board members as in, as a part of the division-wide transition.
I don't want to take one from, where's the camera? I don't want to take one from a teacher, though.
Understand. Yep.
Don't give me a Chromebook if the teachers are going to have it. When all they get one, they're like.
Just ignore him.
Any other questions?
When you come to the retreat, you'll be hopefully pleasantly surprised.
You going to go to the retreat?
I'm sorry, I'll be out of the country.
No, thank you. I appreciate it.
I actually will be out of the country, so.
Thank you very much.
All right.
With regard to this item, I know there has not been a request to expedite. We don't have to. I just was wondering if there is any reason.
Well, are we going to be using them for the current school year? Why not do it now so they can be in place when school starts?
Is there any problem with getting them spun up now?
Are you?
It's all this year's funding, so.
Move twelve oh one to action.
Second.
All right. This is to move twelve point oh one to action. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Moved to approve twelve oh one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Go buy those Chromebooks.
Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Please go buy Chromebooks. Next, we will move on to approve a joint capital improvement program. I believe this is Mr. Haran, but if you don't mind, I'll take just a second to key this one up, if you don't mind. This has been a process between, that started, well, over a year ago with some dialogue with a supervisor with Ms. Mauer across the street about that this would be a great way to continue our shared services and collaborative look at infrastructure, which seems to be many times the tripping point between our boards. And so this move to a joint process that we all buy into the evaluation criteria, timing and such, I believe is probably one of the most important things that we will be doing. But, Mr. Haran, I'll let you give us the overview.
Yes, Madam Chairman, board members, Dr. Benson. As you know, for the last year or so, both boards have been working very closely together, along with staffs, to integrate the current C I P process into a more joint collaborative process. I'm going to give you just a real high-level view of that process and some of the key parameters of that. We're going to talk a little bit about the new process, the schedule associated with that process, the evaluation criteria, touch a little bit on the scoring, and then what staff is planning from the school division to submit as projects in that process. The capital improvement program process, they divided the types of projects into large projects, similar to new schools, major renovations, and small projects. And we coined it the three Rs, or the repair, replacement, or rehabilitation. It's essentially our infrastructure projects, repair and maintenance projects. So staff is proposing to the boards and to consider the projects, these two groups of projects separately. In FY nineteen twenty-eight C I P, which is the one that's going to be starting to work on here next month, we will only consider the large projects. The smaller projects, we're not sure, staff is not sure how to propose that. We have a going-in position in terms of how to address it as we have historically, but we may consider, the boards may consider changing that in the FY twenty to twenty-nine C I P, how we address the three Rs projects and the funding and how those projects are evaluated. So going into the nineteen twenty-eight C I P, which is the one we're going to start next month, we're only going to consider large projects. The smaller infrastructure projects will still be developed by our staff, and will be submitted, and we hope that there'll be a wedge, and I'll explain that to you in a second. Large C I P projects, essentially the process is my, the folks in my area of responsibility will identify the requirements, and we do that with a three-pronged approach. We have a call letter from our principals. We work with our maintenance staff, and then we use our facility assessment methodology to drive requirements. Now, most of the time, they drive infrastructure-type requirements, but they do, based on the enrollment projections and the condition of our facilities, do drive larger C I P projects. So we will justify and vet those projects internally within the school division and get the approval from the superintendent before we submit those to the Joint C I P Technical Review Committee. The Joint T R C Committee is chaired by the Finance Director for the County. The school board or school division members are myself and Chris Fulmer from Finance. That committee, along with others from the county side, that committee will review technical and cost aspects of all the projects, and we'll score them through an evaluation process that we'll, I'll share with you in the next slide. And then recommendations will go to the C I P Oversight Committee. Before it goes to the C I P Oversight Committee, each respective staffs will share with their boards the recommendations. So Chris and I would come back and share with you the scoring and the prioritization of those projects with you in a work session format for information only. If you, if the board had significant concerns, then the representatives that are on the C I P Oversight Committee would take those back and be able to address those in the next rounder of reviews. The Joint C I P Oversight Committee is chaired jointly by the respective financial advisory Fab Chairs. The school board members are the Fab members, so the three members on our Fab would be our members to the Joint C I P Oversight Committee. Their charge or their mission will be to review the T R C recommendations and ensure alignment with policy, vision, principles, those items as set forth in our county and school division strategic plans and the county comprehensive plan. And then the county administrator will take those recommendations coming out of the C I P. It could be the same exactly as the T R C, or it could be changed, edited, and they will take those and submit those formally to the Board of Supervisors during the budget process approval. Any questions on the large projects process? The small C I P projects for this coming year, both staffs are recommending continuing with the bond wedge for school infrastructure projects that we have in the past. There is a happy medium between cash-funded projects, a certain percentage, and bond-funded projects. Because our physical plant is so large and the investment required on an annual basis is so significant that, at this point in time, cash would be very difficult to fund those requirements. And so in the past, historically, for the past five or six years, we've used a combination of cash as well as V P S A bond funds to solve that repair and maintenance infrastructure requirements to sustain our plant. You can see the annual bond fund investment is equal to some percentage of the plant replacement value. And what that means is, we have a plant of about four million square feet and about twelve hundred acres of grounds that we take care of, including fields and what have you. There is a percentage, industry standard, that says you should fund a certain percentage of that replacement value. So to replace that, four million square feet cost X amount of dollars, and so a certain percentage of that is required on an annual basis to keep your plant up and running and functioning. You're taking care of what you own. So that percentage is still being worked between the staffs, what it should be. And so we're going to try and continue that wedge for the next C I P iteration. And then if the boards choose to delve further into that and want to integrate that smaller level of projects together into a joint evaluation process, it will be up for discussion for other boards during the next year. So, any questions on that? Okay. Here's the schedule. So right now, the actual, kind of, the forms, the directives are being developed right now to come out to the departments as well as the school division. We should, we have a meeting tomorrow to finalize some of the actual evaluation forms, how they're going to look, what information is going to be required, et cetera, et cetera. And that begins, the requirement date for those projects are in mid-August. And then we'll go through the different steps that I just outlined with the T R C and the Oversight Committees, and then it comes to fruition with the approval of the budget in April. Any questions on the schedule? Okay. Evaluation, criteria, and scoring. So there's eight categories. The way they're proposing the score is one through four, with a project that has the biggest need will get a four in a particular category. So one would be a little, obviously, between one and four is going to be somewhat subjective based on how you analyze the different tenets of each category. So there's eight categories: health and safety, education, impact on the operational budget, special considerations, economic, quality of life, infrastructure, and sustainable and energy efficiency. Each are weighted differently. Most are fifteen percent. So you get a score of four, for instance, in education, and then it would be multiplied by one point five, and then same thing with each category, and you would come up with a ultimate score for your particular project. And then it would be racked and stacked according to all the other projects that are being, competing for available funds. And then they would look at the debt capacity that the county would currently, and then we would make some decisions in the T R C as to which projects and when. And then the rationale behind those projects would be forwarded to the boards for their information, and then on to the C I P Oversight Committee for further consideration. Any questions? Okay. The projects that staff is planning to submit are not new. These were all submitted in the last C I P iteration. High School Number Six, Elementary School Number Eighteen, to rebuild a ferry farm, renovation addition at Hartwood, renovation at Drew, and then the addition to Fleet Services. Any questions?
I just have one real quick, just, hey, thanks, Scott. It looks good. It'll be, it'll look a lot better once we see it in action, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Right now, it's kind of just, so, Scott, now you did, it's kind of an offshoot on this, though. You did the evaluation of the elementary schools and Drew, I think, already. Is that, are those issues found in that survey that we, I think we paid for it, or is that going to be put on the hit list as well?
Well, what we did, we did facility, we upgraded the facility assessments for not only Ferry Farm but Drew.
Drew, Hartwood.
That associate, that a couple, for listeners, we'll take Ferry Farm, for example.
Okay.
So the assessment will help us justify and rationalize the need to rebuild that project. So we'll take that information in that assessment and use it to justify and support the project
Right.
in the forms and the format that is established.
Right.
And we'll get that here in probably about a week, week and a half, that format.
Okay.
And so it'll be staff, as well as superintendent's responsibility to make sure that we put as much information that is supporting it.
Right.
Based on the criteria. much information that is supporting it, based on the criteria. So we would try to look at that criteria and say, okay, we want to make this project as attractive as possible, you know, assuming that. And then we would look at all the different areas and say, okay, can this score? So let's make sure we justify it, make sure we properly articulate the needs, the impacts, the deficiencies, those type of things, that maximize the points for this particular project in those particular categories.
Right. No, I agree with all you, everything you just said. I guess my question was, are we going to take the 15 things on each of the school and slide them over to, you know, the actual hit list for the, you know, the maintenance hit list that you have in here that we're approving every?
We lost me 15 things. We lost me.
Let me get the exact wording of the, it's the list of projects that we approve.
Would you expect that perhaps that some of the small projects might move into the wedge as opposed to?
Well, that's a really good question, and we're going to talk to staff tomorrow. We have some projects. Essentially, any project that's over $500,000 can compete for bond funding.
Right.
We have, obviously, the county, as well as school staff, is trying to migrate to more expensive projects, you know, and try to migrate more cash. There are projects in the infrastructure list that exceed a million dollars. They exceed a million dollars, and so some of those projects could be considered. We are trying to figure out at what point is what, is there a threshold? Is it in terms of dollars, or is it in terms of types of projects that would establish a threshold? So right now, I think the county staff, and I am too, is, we can move some of those projects that are significant cost, a million plus, into competing at the large projects. I just don't know when it's all said and done. I'm not sure how successful those may be or not. But we shouldn't not, we should not just overlook them, you know?
Yeah. It was my, you know, just, you know, reading this for a few seconds and kind of just thinking about it, I was just like, you know, shouldn't we compete in as many categories? So, yeah, we can.
Yes.
You know what I mean?
I think the answer is yes.
I mean, the smaller projects, too, just all gets swayed over.
That's right. So when we find out, after tomorrow's meeting, when we find out, when we agree, when staff agrees on some type of threshold to go forward, then we're going to come back and revisit that.
Okay.
And we might identify another 10 or 15 projects that could go forward in the large projects.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any, any comments? I mean, both, all board members have seen this, whether whichever standing committee, because this did come through both the Joint Schools Working Group and the Fab Committee, so it has been seen twice. Oh, sorry, Ms. Egan. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say, as the three-on-three member, Ms. Healy and Ms. Decatur were also part of this exercise with us. We've, we went into this very cautiously, we're optimistic, but cautiously optimistic about it. And I know that there was some pushback about this topic before I got on the three-on-three committee. After hearing the amount of support that the Board of Supervisors was willing to give it and kind of map it out the way we wanted to see it mapped out, as opposed to you will do this and you will do that, we became more open to the idea of having a joint C I P. One of the other benefits to this was that there's a template already that we've, we kind of took from Albemarle County. So it's working there, you know, we brought this in, we tweaked it a little bit to fit the Stafford and all the players in Stafford and how the different, both sides of the street are structured. So I just want to remind everybody, you know, that this is on for information. I guess we'll be voting on this at the next meeting. As strategically as this has been put together, if it doesn't work, there's nothing that prevents us from voting to disassemble it as well. So just want everybody to keep that in mind as we take this up next time. Okay? Thanks.
All right. Any further comments? If not, again, thanks for all the great work on this from Dr. Benson and all your team. Moving on to our final item is regarding the V P S A sale of bonds. We are, this is just on for information. We will be seeing this again on August 8th, so with additional information. So, all right. If there is nothing else, I will announce the next meeting, meetings of the school board. We will be meeting August 1st, first at Moncur at 2:30. Got that right? Then we will be going on to our retreat beginning at 4:30, which will be here in this building. And then our next regularly scheduled meeting is on August 8th.[1762.23]